Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P M. We are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. Uh, just for the record, is anybody else recording this meeting besides Lake Cam? With that said, uh, we do have a quorum tonight. Uh, so the first item on our agenda is a continued public hearing for thirteen Main Street, uh, which is application of a site plan review, approval, uh, submitted by Main Street Real Estate Holdings for proposed development with two and three-story apartment buildings with a total of forty age-qualified residential units associated with site improvements and a possible vote. So, at this time, Bob Forbes, you have the floor. You want to go through some of the revisions? Can he go through revisions on the plan while you guys are?
Yeah, that, that, that's fine.
So, at the last meeting, um, we talked about getting a little more detail on the, um, on the architectural, so this is what was submitted. Uh, Bo had the architects, uh, go over this and get a couple of different options for the siding and whatnot. And the only other thing we're asked to do is revise the, um, the lighting plan, um, to include the, the lights on the buildings. So that's what I've done here, and you can see we've now lit up the fronts of the buildings and the sidewalks. Um, you can see these are all the, um, wall-mounted fixtures were attached, were put on the buildings and the, uh, photometrics applied, so, um, that's pretty much it. That's all I was asked to do and I-
And on this plan, you had already revised through with environmental partners with the parking spaces? There was like two-
Yes, yes.
That was already done?
The two new ones are these two right here.
Yeah.
So yeah, that was done at the last meeting.
Okay.
So literally, that's the only change we made to our site plan set.
And so, and again, I'm not gonna make it a big problem, but me and Mark had had a discussion about a week ago about electric vehicle chargers, uh, corresponded with, uh, Nathan Darling about the current stretch code requirements. He had said that January twenty-third, that was updated again to a new version, uh, and there would be some requirement for that. Um, have you thought about putting any chargers in? Just because it is, it sounds like it's gonna be a requirement based on this stretch-
We, yeah, I mean, the way, the way with everything, if it's gonna be required, we're gonna comply with it. Um, it's not something I've ever done in Lakeville or any other town, to be honest.
So, I guess what we'll be looking for is a hypothetical location to house the required amount, because some of the requirement is not necessarily putting in the chargers as much as pre-wiring.
Pre-wire, it's, it's wiring. I can't put electrical wiring on my plants.
No, but I'm saying if you just showed a proposed location for-
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna require, based on what, um, Mark sent me today, it's twenty percent of the spaces, so it's, uh, sixteen spaces. So there'll be eight associated with this building and eight associated with this building, presumably. Unless you can double, unless you can wire for multiple, maybe we, you can, I don't know how that works, so.
Yeah. I can come on, done that real quick.
If you guys want a full two cheers, okay, you can.
Yep, so yeah, fully, fully aware of the stretch code and the implication, and I think Lakeville adopted that, one of the early adopters, maybe back in like two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen.
I was the first permit.
Oh, okay. So I can, I can tell you that we're gonna fully comply with it. We haven't got to that stage of the design. Um, the majority of that design work's gonna require full architectural, so we're gonna go out to, um, mechanical engineering, and we're gonna comply with it with whatever their recommendations are. And it's, it's a controlled build, um, so it's affidavit controls that we're gonna have to submit through the building department as we go through the process.
The only reason why I kind of thought that we ought to discuss it tonight is because, depending on where they're located, um, so let's say you put some on the island, you can charge the cars around the island without crossing over any sidewalks with electric, uh, you know, charging cables. However, if you, um, so, because if you put it along the back of a sidewalk, you've got cables running across the sidewalk, which you can't really do, it's repetitive, so-
I don't think that's even allowed, Mark.
Right, exactly, that's what I'm saying, so-
Make a location that's actually conducive to use them and not create a hazard.
So if you put them at the front of the sidewalk, then your sidewalks need to move back. If you can locate them, let's say, along, uh, where there are no sidewalks, like along the C V S, those ten parking spaces and along the island, then maybe you don't need to make any adjustments. So, um, you know, that's, that counts to enough spaces, right?
So, yeah, so we, so we, we can definitely, it hasn't been designed yet-
Right.
But we can comply with the stretch code, with this site plan.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I guess is that something, we'd like that on a plan of record?
Yeah, I mean, I think it should be indicated as this is where the, you know, circle them, highlight them, you know-
Proposed E V charging area.
E V, exactly.
Kind of block out where you think you can fit them, and just to show us, so that we know that it's not going on a sidewalk, it would affect, which would negatively impact pedestrian flow.
So there's a, there's a whole entire electrical code around those charging stations, and different manufacturers have different setbacks, and there's a whole mother, I believe the stretch code refers to a portion of the electrical code that governs that.
Alright, so I think probably what we should do is just put a condition on the approval, just to say that they, they'll meet stretch code requirements for E V charging stations as needed, and that's, leave it at that.
I, I, yeah, I don't even think that's, there's a whole separate code that we have to follow that's outside of site plan for that.
Right. Um, I would recommend that, you know, either you or Mike talk to, uh, Mr. Darling about that, because I think there's some interpretation maybe as to whether it's, uh, per mixed-use zoning requirements or the town's general bylaw for the two spaces per dwelling unit, so. Figure that out, that's gonna determine-
So I, I had a conversation with the building commissioner about this.
Okay. Uh, what other points are we gonna touch on tonight? Have we had?
So Chin, I think you wanted to see, uh, the siding options last time over?
Yeah, Bob had showed us real quick. Um, I, I guess my only question to that, I'd see a couple of options, uh, ultimately, whatever is agreed upon, just wanna make sure that a copy of that gets filed with the site plan, just so that zoning has that to go back when they're doing their approval process, say, oh yeah, that's, you did it as planned. Uh, so do any board members have any opinions about?
Do we know what the material will be for the siding?
So we haven't got to the point of any material selection yet. We provided a couple of different options, so, and we can go with whatever, if the board has a preference or, or not.
The site plan review does say, uh, natural materials is preferred.
Well, tha- that said, I think as far as this rendering goes, it's really, uh, color pattern breakup of materials, where using the, the rear siding option one, option two. My opinion, option one looks better because it's a little bit more, uh, broken up. It gives the appearance of, uh, multifaceted construction, whereas option two is pretty much monolithic, one color. Uh, it, clearly, option one, in my opinion, looks better.
I agree.
I mean, is that, do you mind us going through this and saying this is what we'd like, and that's what we can agree on?
Yeah, yeah, I provided two options, so.
Oh, it's, are you good with, so the bottom options seem to be more of a, a blue-gray palette, and then as you go up into left and right side, they seem to be either a gray with a, is that a brick on the bottom type of veneer or something?
Yeah, so those are, those are warmer colors on the top, and then it gets, it's darker as you go down.
Um, so I guess my question is, if we said front, option two, rear, option one, is that what you intend by giving us those choices?
Yeah, so that, that's why we did, we flipped it on the front and back.
Any opinion there, Nora?
I'm just, let me ask a question, so front siding option one is top left, correct?
Yep.
And then are we saying a left siding of option, option one would have that, like, brick-type of tone to the bottom?
Yeah, y- yes.
I guess I just don't understand why we wouldn't continue the coloration around the entire building. So it'd only, almost be like front siding option one, left siding option two?
Ultimately, we're not picking your colors.
Yeah.
We're picking the, the variation. Is, would you agree with that statement?
Or? If, if you wanna pick the colors, you would, it makes my, it makes my life easier, uh, but, but, but yeah, the, the goal was to show how it can be broken up in, into two different, uh, two different ways.
Yep. Well, Michelle or Jack, do you guys have any?
I agree with you. I agree, the rear siding option one, um, and then front siding option two. And even the left side and siding option one and right side siding option two, because it kind of breaks it up a little bit more. Actually, you know, the option one and two for the right, I think, are pretty close. But yeah, I, I think definitely something that breaks it up more, so it doesn't have that solid, massive building structure look to it.
Uh, Bo, is the top where it says front and front option one and two, are those for the front building? In the rear siding, is for the rear buildings at the bottom? So that you'd have different, a darker building and a lighter building? Is that how this is?
So that, no, that, that's not how it's done. Um, it, it's just shown two different options on each profile of the building.
And in theory, what we choose would be both buildings?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason why on the rear views, it's much darker than either the sides or the fronts?
That was just to show not that we're necessarily going with that color, just to show what it would look like, uh, from an elevation with a darker color, and then another elevation with a lighter color.
So there's really four options here. There's the two top ones and the two, two bottom ones, for lighter and darker. And then those would be carried around, that pattern would be carried around the entire building.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the goal was to show-
I think there's a little confusion.
Different colors, but all the same profiles of the same building with two different options.
Right.
Not my area of expertise, I'm fine with it.
Which one?
I mean, what?
Michelle, on right side, which one, one or two?
Either one.
I mean, I, I think you should carry the same coloring throughout the entire building and not do the front dark, not that dark.
Yeah, no, yeah, the intention was never to have a front building a different color than the back of the building. It was just an example to show what it could look like in a light or a dark.
Right, that's what I mean, it's, it's four different, it's four different, it's, yeah, it should be option one, two, three, and four, but yes.
That?
Yep.
You good with those choices, Jack?
Yep.
So, uh, based on what the board just picked, they would agree to the pattern from front siding option two, left siding option one, right siding option two, and rear siding option one.
That works for us.
Correct. Great. Uh, I have, uh, some correspondence from the fire chief. Uh, there was a conversation back and forth between Kathy and himself, uh, ending in, it appears that they have captured what I have required. Hopefully, other authorities mandate the elevators. Thank you. Any other, I think, what members have any comments before we, uh?
Um, like I said, I would just like to know what the materials are, if, if, because it, we do, our site plan does ask for, um, preference of natural materials.
Before we start construction, I have no issue submitting what the proposed siding materials will be. It, it says we discourage against aluminum and vinyl, but natural, natural materials preferred, so.
If, I'm completely, if, if that's the goal, to stay away from vinyl, I'm, I'm okay saying the siding will not include any vinyl.
What, what? I don't know.
Yeah, so there's, there's so many, I mean, I guess, I don't know what's, what's natural. Most, most of the wood siding is, is composite now, even the wood siding isn't all wood.
That's right, like a hardy plank or something.
Correct, right. Um-
But not stucco.
There, there, yeah, there's, there's no, I mean-
You don't have a Eastus or Drive It type siding?
No, no.
Yeah. It all looks like it's either gonna be a clapboard or a shingle type of?
Yeah, it's, it's all proposed, um, either, either clap, um, brick veneer, um, and I haven't decided if the clap was gonna be like an L P smart side, which is a composite versus a hardy, which is a cement-based, but if the goal's to stay away from stucco and vinyl, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think that would be a goal, or, and if you did need to do something with that, I think that, like, the cedar impressions type of, a step up from just the double four-inch clap-looking thing, I think that's really what we're trying to avoid, is something that looks very-
Okay.
Low budget.
Yeah, that's, that's fine by me.
So, Mark had drafted, uh, draft decision there, did you get a chance to review that, Mike?
I, I did, um, we, we got it this afternoon. Um, I'm hoping we can kind of run through some of the conditions, um, and, and the reason I, I want it, as I indicated before, I, I think some of the conditions exceed what the board's supposed to do. Um, and if you look at your, your bylaw, the, the conditions are supposed to mitigate impact, uh, impacts to the neighborhood from the proposed development. And, and looking at some of these, I, I think it goes beyond that. And some, uh, some of it I understand why, some of it I don't think's authorized by the bylaw, some I'm not gonna push back on, but, but there are certain things I think we, we should go through and discuss, and, and I've heard some additional conditions are gonna be added, um, tonight anyways, just based on our discussion, so I think it makes sense to run through it.
Go ahead.
Okay.
You wanna start?
Sure. Um, number, condition number one, I, I have no, no issue with just referencing the plans. Um, condition number two, uh, the performance guarantee, uh, again, I, I get the motivation behind it. I'm not sure you can do it under site plan review. Um, I'm sure the town council would argue otherwise, but I'm not, I'm not pushing back against it. I'm just, just, I just want it made known that I'm not sure it's, it's there. Um, condition number three, the applicant shall pay required inspection fee prior to any site work occurring on the property or the issuance of a building permit. I'm not sure what inspection fee is being referred to.
Um, so we have a consulting engineer who will be doing the inspections, um, for drainage, subgrade, you know, the site stuff, paving, landscaping, um, so there's a fee cost involved in that.
So, so it's the boards, the boards, engineers, inspectors, yeah, I think if we could just clarify that in the decision, I, we have no issue with it, because I think you guys are entitled to do that, so I have no, I have no problem with that.
Okay. The language needs to take care of that, Mark?
Yes.
Yeah, I just didn't know what it was referring to.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, number four, I don't have an issue with, uh, number five is fine. Uh, number six, um, I don't think this tracks the language of the bylaw, uh, the first sentence. Um, I think if, if, if it could be changed to reflect what the bylaw actually says, I, I'm, I'm okay with the rest of it. I mean, it should say, at commencement of occupancy of any new residential unit, at least one tenant of the unit shall be fifty-five years of age or older. That, that's what the bylaw says, so if it tracked that, I'm good with it.
So, Mark, you had, had this reviewed by council, what was their comment on it?
Their opinion is that upon every new leasing up of the unit, that's new tenants, so, um, which is, um, why they have it, the language here.
But, but that, well, I got, I got two questions in that. Um, I don't necessarily agree, as I said last time, um, if, if it tracked the bylaw language, I'm, I'm good with it. Um, but if that's how it's interpreted, has anyone asked the zoning enforcement officer what his interpretation of it should be? Um, in, in the beginning, opening paragraphs, um, I believe it reflects what council said, but in past projects, um, council has seemed to defer to the zoning enforcement officer's opinion, um, which makes sense. So, again, i- i- if, if he said that, I agree with that interpretation, I'd still push back against it. But if it reflects the language of the bylaw, there's no harm in the file, the board, you're still protected.
I don't have a written opinion from him, but I have conversed with him on that, and I think that he is sort of on the side of the best possible enforcement of what the bylaw states in perpetuity. So if you'd like us to get a written opinion, we will, and, and that will-
I don't need a written opinion, obviously, Mr. Chairman, you guys are writing the decision. I'm just saying if it, I don't have an issue with it, if, as long as it parroted the bylaw, the way, the way it's written, I, I do have, I have some, some issue with, um, but again, that's, that's your decision, it's not my decision. Uh, again, a draft lease agreement shall be submitted to the planning board for the age restriction requirement. Uh, again, I guess that's, that's tied to the previous, um, condition. Uh, number eight, I don't have an issue with, number nine, I don't have a problem with, uh, number ten, I'm okay with, number eleven, um, the last sentence, the applicant shall install oil and grease traps in the catch basins, I believe our detail shows, hoods, hoods over there?
Yeah, hoods, and grease trap is something very different than a hooded catch basin, so I just, it's, all it should say is-
And that would be required by conservation, not?
They're, well, Concom's, uh, already approved it, and it's based on the details there on the plan. I'm just saying, grease trap is something very different than a catch basin.
That's for a restaurant sink.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I think if we just-
Boiled grit separator.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the hood, the hoods catch floatables, uh, retain floatables in the, in the-
Right, right.
Catch basin.
Yeah, that's the intent of that language.
It's just the wording is, is off.
Mm-hmm, right.
Yeah, it, it is some, a different actual structure.
Yep.
Uh, number twelve, we're okay with. Uh, number thirteen, I, 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 I don't, I think the issue I have with it is not adjusting the level of lighting, but now if we're, we're changing the type of, type of lighting fixtures or the location of the lights, um, if the board wants that. If, if it's not as shown on the plan, I think this board has the ability to do that, but the way I read it is, um, someone could be driving by one night and say, oh, there's a light that's, it's, I don't know, it's broken or something, but, um, but I have no issue with, with, if you, if you, if the lights are too bright and we can turn them down. It's just the la, the type of lighting fixtures, the location, the individual lights, I, I would like to strike it from the kitchen.
This, this becomes less of an issue nowadays, that cities and towns are requiring photometrics plans, and they're actually being provided, and they're a lot, thought more reasonable than what they used to be years ago, um-
I don't disagree, and that's finding, kind of why I'm questioning it.
Change, change language to say that the lighting on the site must match the photometric plan provided and must comply with the lighting bylaw?
Well, so if it doesn't match, then they would have to change it, so that kind of sticks with the existing wording.
Well, yeah, if the fixture doesn't do what it's supposed to do and it, it goes off-site, yeah, well, I think we're obligated to change it, but it-
I mean, on occasion, you know, things, different fixtures get put up, different, uh, you know-
Do, do we have to fix your spec?
It doesn't, it doesn't happen often as much anymore, but, um-
I think the biggest thing is when somebody down the road changes the lights, you know? Twelve years from now, the building changes hands and they say, we're gonna do a little remodeling, they don't-
No, I, I, I understand, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure a way to, to do it, just so it's a little less arbitrary, um-
So I think we're, we're fine adjusting the level of lighting and the type of lighting fixtures to match photometric plan?
And, and should they wanna change the, this is gonna run with the property, so any future changes to the light fixtures need to come before the, the planning board for, for approval under this decision.
And/or, and still continue to comply with the lighting bylaw?
Right, yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, I'll modify that one.
Okay.
Uh, condition fourteen makes sense to me. Um, condition fifteen, we're, all site work must be completed within twelve months of the issuance of building permit, or the applicant shall return to the board the schedule of completion. I, I, I get the reasoning behind it, I was hoping we could change it to eighteen months or twenty-four months. I'm not sure we'd get it done within twelve, especially if we're doing one building at a time or however it works.
Right, yeah, I think the reason behind it is just to have the applicant come back in, review the schedule and, and, and see where there are-
Why do eighteen months with this option for a six-month extension?
Eighteen months.
If necessary?
I, I think eighteen's, eighteen's fine, if we have to come back in, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, number sixteen, it talks about the street opening permit, that's a state highway. I don't think we would have to go to the, the town for anything on that, so I don't think condition sixteen's necessary.
But you would need state highway-
We, yeah, we have to apply for a curb cut still from Mass.
And, and so they have standards for that?
Right.
Okay, so we'll change that to refer to the Mass Highway.
Yeah, I'm com, I'm fine with that, yeah. Uh, seventeen is fine, eighteen is fine. Um, so nineteen, uh, it talks about, um, if elevator is required and we have to change the footprint of the building, we have to file a new site plan application, uh, with you folks. I was hoping we could, to, to reword it, so the modif, just the modified foot-
Update the plan with a modification?
Would come in instead of having to do a whole-
I don't wanna do site plan again.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so if we'd submitted a modified site plan for you guys to review and approve-
I think ultimately that's the goal, isn't it? The right plan on the record.
Yeah, I, we, we don't have, um, anything, I did look through that earlier, 'cause-
Right.
Uh, that was pointed out, um, but we don't really have anything to, in the current bylaw that addresses modifications and, you know, so I basically was just left it like that because a new application, I mean, we're really gonna only look at the, uh, modified footprint and how it affects the overall site plan, so, I mean, but we're not gonna like relook at, like, the plantings or-
Could we, could we just limit it to any new site plan application? It, it requires a new filing of new application limited to the changes to the plan, and just, that's it? That way, we're not-
Rehashing it?
Yeah, exactly.
Agreed, yep.
Um, number twenty, uh, I, I, I'm not sure what the rationale behind it is, why, well, I do and I don't. Any proposed change from the approved site plans or additional site work deemed substantive by any town official shall be presented for review by the planning board. The, the board should determine if there's a need for public hearing, and blah, 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 blah. So my, my question is, is that, does that open us up for anyone driving by saying, hey, I got a problem with this, this, this-
The dog catcher?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, any official, it's pretty, pretty broad, yeah.
I'm agreeing with you, but, uh, so yeah, I mean, we might wanna change that language a little bit, but, to still protect the town, Mark, but to get your pointer across, what do you wanna do?
The town planner, zoning enforcement, uh-
Limit it to people related to-
Yeah, I think so.
This land use board or zoning?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep. Uh, blah, 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 all construction shown on the site plan unless otherwise noted, uh, this is twenty-one, all, all construction, structures shown on the site plan unless otherwise noted must be completed prior to the issuance of occupancy permit. So we've got two buildings, I don't think we'll have all buildings, we'll build the two buildings and try to rent it out. So it'll probably be phased, building one will be done, people will move in, and then building two will be going, so.
I think that it probably makes sense then to put a parameter in the parking lot, so to speak, so that parking for, let's, building one, if you completed construction of building one and you wanted to gain occupancy, that we would give you, uh, grant occupancy if you had fifty percent of the parking area complete.
Right.
And, you know, it did not impede access for those tenants with construction going on.
Yeah, that makes sense, I think what we, what I've done before is, um, um, in order to get a certificate of occupancy, all utilities and parking that's serving that particular building have to be installed, um, prior to many occupancy. Um, you know, we might not have the, the top code all done, because we want to wait till it's, it's all, everything's constructed.
Feather the ramps, so that the handicap would still work, but if you pull up that little bit of binder later to top coat it.
Right, so I, I can write something along the lines of this project may be phased.
Yeah.
You know, in, in, uh, into, uh, two phases, uh, the.
Right.
First building may be occupied, provided, um.
Sufficient parking.
Sufficient parking, lighting, drain, drainage, and access is provided, or something along those lines, yeah.
Yep. Uh, twenty-two, as, as built, plans to be provided, um, fine, twenty-three, um, that parrots the bylaw, I'm okay with that. Twenty-four, I'm okay with that. Um, appeals to, um, appeals to this decision, um, it references section eight, I'm not sure if that's correct, Mark. I think the bylaw has its own provision for the appeal, it's to Superior Court, uh, the court, uh, six point seven, eight point two on page forty-two.
Six point seven point eight, okay.
Point two.
Point two appeals. Now, is that specific, oh, that's specific to site plan review, okay, all right. I will, uh, reference that.
Yeah, I just don't want.
Yeah.
Something happen to me, you know.
Mm-hmm.
And I think other, other than that, Mr. Chairman, in, in our, our position on the, uh, the language of the age qualified housing, I'm, I'm okay with the rest.
Okay, um, just a couple of questions for you, not directly related to this board, but it's one of those things sometimes we catch or see as we're going along. You, during the process of construction, are gonna remove quite a bit of gravel, I think that does trigger the gravel removal permit, uh, to go through the site board.
Dude, this is a fill, isn't it, probably a fill here?
Yeah.
Are you moving from the front to the back?
It's set a net of three thousand square feet, even though there was a total of six thousand, you're moving some from different areas. You said a net removal of three thousand, so anything over two thousand does have to house that or a removal.
So if we, if we, if, if our cut requires an earth removal permit, we'll have to get an earth removal permit?
Uh, okay.
I don't, I don't, I didn't think it triggered it, I could be wrong.
It's two thousand yards.
Yeah.
Two thousand yards.
Yeah. So if more than two thousand's going outside, that triggers it.
Okay.
Anybody else say anything from the planning board?
I do, I do have some. So, um, just reading through on the second page, um. So. It said, the board did not require a new application fee, I guess I didn't recall that, even though it was de, uh, deemed a substantial difference from the original plan, there was no fee charged? I don't recall that.
Yeah, we just re-advertized, yeah, the board discussed that, um, the plan was substantially different. Um, it was still the same applicant, it was still for housing under the same section of bylaw.
Okay, cause I thought we revised the fee schedule and that we do have a fee for substantial change.
But we didn't go through the entire hearing process.
Oh, so that's why.
Kind of withdrew to reapply because it didn't meet the zoning.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of a, if I recall, um, we had that original plan that we, we had spoken to you about and, um, there was a, there was an issue with the setbacks.
Right.
And then instead of, you know, re-notifying the whole world and re-advertising the new fees and withdrawing and reapplying, we, we discussed, um, filing the new plans and just re-advertising, um, that new plans are being presented, so.
Yeah, cause you only had one initial opening of the hearing.
I think that was great, I think.
Yeah, and that was it, and then you came in for, um, it wasn't even the date of the continued hearing, it was just for a discussion.
Right.
And then you, then you brought in more detailed discussion plans and then you made the filing, right.
Okay, so if that's a fact, then that's a fact. Um, and then a little further down the next paragraph, it says there, there were no butters present at the public hearings, but we do know there have been quite a few residents from the Route seventy-nine and Main Street areas who've expressed concerns regarding traffic and elevators and about this being a rental, um, facility. So I think to include this line is kind of misleading. It, it almost seems as though nobody was interested in this.
I can, I can add, I mean, there were no butters present, but I can add saying that, uh, other, other residents of the, uh, Main Street area were present and expressed, um, um, a concern related to those items you just mentioned.
Yeah, I think that would be probably a fair representation to get that in there.
Um, and then it said all items identified by environmental partners were addressed. And so I did just refer back and there, there were a few, I know we got new plans Wednesday, um, with some final little items. Did environmental partners close out all the open items? Because, um, it didn't look like it was all closed the last time I checked.
Yeah, I, I thought not the last hearing, prior hearing, Mr. Chairman, I, I wasn't there, that, um, a, a letter from environmental partners saying that everything had been, other comments were addressed, was filed with the board? Am I mistaken?
No, I have this August sixteenth, maybe it's not the final.
That sounds about right, cause the last hearing, we talked about two things, was, uh, modifying the photometric plan and, and the elevations.
Mm-hmm.
Right, part of, also part of these revisions was the, the parking, because.
Stabilization, adding a, a maintenance plan for the drainage, um, sediment tracking onto adjacent roads. Like, there were some items, I just wanted to make sure that they did close them all out. And one of the comments by environmental partners is, um, in regards to, it says, uh, we recommend planning board require a final utilities plan with proposed electric utilities submitted for review and approval prior to the commencement of construction. So I know you were talking about electric vehicle charging ports, so if that, I think that should probably be added as a condition as well, just to have that submitted. Cause we're asking for the water, which was another, uh, comment, was to have tauten water, and that, I did see that in here somewhere, um.
So, Mr. Chairman, we responded to that comment about the electrical plan, uh, we don't do that, uh, on site plans. Um, it, if we show a conceptual electrical plan, first of all, I'm not supposed to even put electrical on a plant on a site, you don't want that liability. Yeah, I'm not, I legally can't do it. But what happens is Middleboro Gas Electric comes and they tell us exactly what's going to happen after we've done everything. It, it's, it has, and they will not look at it until the, we have your town approvals. So, um, it's not like we could submit something to them, have us, have them give us a design and us put it on a plan, that's not the way it goes. It's just never done that way. So, um, and I explained that in the response letter to, uh, to EP, in the last go-round. So we, we don't have an intention of doing that, it is directed by Middleboro Gas and Electric, and Electric, and that's just the way it is.
I thought we did require it at one point, and we saw something from an applicant from Middleboro Gas and Electric. I remember Peter asking for it, I think.
I can speak to this real quick, I've had, uh, many conversations with Ed, um, the electrical engineer, uh, for new builds over at Middleboro Electric. And it's kind of like a state curb cut permit, they won't review anything until it's fully approved by the town. So the electric department, when we send them the approved plans, uh, Bob in his office will send it them to NCAD, and then Middleboro Electric fully designs the whole entire electrical plan, because those are their lines. So in the past, we've tried showing proposed electrical locations and they, they're just gonna come in and, and do their design plan.
So does Middleboro G have something to do with electric vehicle chargers, or you're just talking about services into the building?
Uh, I'm talking about all the electrical services for the site.
Yeah, generally, they're not shown on site plans, you know, unless there's some special reason why they need to be, um. So, and they're not really required, I mean, we do ask that they be placed underground, um.
That's fine.
Right.
And in the past, Middleboro Gas and Electric has taken underground electric and made it not underground electric and vice versa. So, just like, maybe just come in, this is the way it's going to be, period.
So in other municipalities like Ever Source and those guys, they're always, no, get it all approved and we'll tell you where we want our transformers and all that stuff, so it's similar.
Okay, so for some reason, peer review is suggesting it even though it's not.
It's, I, I was surprised that they suggested that, to be honest, every engine, every civil engineer knows that that's the way it's done. Or should know.
Okay, um, well, then moving on, um, when, when we're talking about these, the lease agreement, um, is there enforcement? What is the enforcement that is there?
I think that's a question you'd have to ask, uh, Nate, zoning enforcement.
So that would be him, that would be Nate?
Yeah, it would be, so a violation of the approval would be a zoning violation, so it would be enforceable under the rules or a treaty. So they're violating something that was approved under zoning, so it would be a zoning violation.
That's all my comments on the conditions.
You good?
Yes.
Jack, you good?
Uh, you know, I think all my concerns were addressed, you know, the over fifty-five and the leasing issue, the handicap access, the elevators was my main issue. And then that phased parking, so I think they've all been addressed by everybody tonight.
Okay, Nora?
I'm good.
All right, um, so would anybody like to say anything?
It's Noel, real late, Phil, I just, um, I wanted to just remind you that you could consider it a cost of doing business in a community that, um, cares about its residents who might be in a wheelchair, um, that they, they need an elevator. I mean, for all different reasons, people can't climb stairs, we have a lady on the board here who just had back surgery. She, she couldn't do, like, the stairs. I know, I know they're expensive and you want to save money, but that's my feeling, is that you need to make it accessible with an elevator, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Susan Speler, Ten Valley Road. So my question about the electric vehicle charging units. You should probably have one by the handicap parking as well, cause you could have a handicap person that has parking that has to charge a vehicle and now they can't use the handicap parking space. Just a thought. And to get on the elevators, I mean, how it can't be required for fifty-five and over, they are clearly discriminating against the elderly. And if, I, I could just see lawsuits coming, if someone can't get into that apartment that's fifty-five and over, cause there are no elevators, they are discriminating. And that's just not right, if this is truly fifty-five and over, there should be elevators and they should be required. That's all I have to say.
Appreciate your comments, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gregory, how are you?
Good thanks, how are you all doing? So I was thinking about the comment recently, and Mark, we spoke on the phone the other day, about, the comment was about, um, access to the second building by the fire trucks, the hook and ladder fire truck. So, you have to flip this over, the site plan, if you had, my question, did this come up, and Mark, I know you told me it did. This triangle piece of land back here, twenty Rhode Island Road, Lakeville owns that, it abus the property. And you've got this road coming up, if you had a second access back here from thirteen Main onto Rhode Island Road, in the worst case scenario.
We did discuss this, but they don't own enough frontage to do that, they'd be crossing somebody else's property.
So, uh, the concept in my prior real estate stuff, you know, personal homes, you get an easement across someone else's property. So in public safety, if you have a catastrophe and you're flooded, you need to evacuate injured, the ambulances can leave onto seventeen, or seventy-nine, while new vehicles come in off of Main Street. Likewise, day to day, it's dangerous to turn left out of this main exit entrance. You know, particularly, you know, anyone, seniors, anyone, so if you were able to, if the resident were able to exit out, out here on this proposed theoretical back ramp, could, could come, turn right, safer, go up to the light at, at, uh, at Four Seasons and execute a left turn safely, controlled by the light. So my question is, I know it was discussed, why was it dismissed? You know, granted.
Again, because they, they don't own the land.
But Lakeville could grant, you know, make, make some, make some agreement, financial otherwise, where you grant a little bit, bit of land that nothing's being done with this, this property, this Lakeville town property. So for public safety grant, I don't know if this is even possible, you know, I'm just wondering, raise the question, say, offer access onto seventy-nine, so for two reasons, okay? And nothing's being done with the town property, so.
I, I would, at this point, I'm deferring to the fire chief at this point, who, he's been satisfied with his access around that second building, John. Uh, that everything that, all his concerns have been addressed, so. Uh, you know, I, I think beyond that, it would be a bit of overreach if the fire chief is satisfied. And I, I understand what you're saying, but then I think there'd be a whole nother group of people in here fighting this, because they don't, we've already seen, like, if a, a road goes out onto seventy-nine, there's a bunch of people that don't want that too. There's many people that, you know, you think it makes great sense, and it might, there would be a bunch of people that live on Rhode Island Road and say, we don't want any more traffic, we don't want people coming through, then it's a cut through, it's a this, it's a that. You know, so, and we've dealt with that with other properties, where we've made them put up a gate, so it's not a cut through, because it may end up being some, in some way unsafe. So, thank you, appreciate your comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Jack?
I think you made a comment earlier about the fire chief relative of the elevators, or did I miss something, missing?
I read his comment letter.
I mean, how in the world we could put these buildings up without elevators, four fifty-five and over is beyond.
Yeah, we, we'll see, but it's certainly out of the planning board's hands, but.
Yeah, I mean, the planning board can't require it, but it did send information around, uh, in. indicating, and I did speak with someone at the Massachusetts Architectural Board, Architectural Access Board, who did state that elevators would be required for this buil, these buildings, so. But again, it's not, that's why we have that condition in there, cuz it's not on the site plan, but that if they do have to put in those elevators, which I'm in the opinion you do, you would have, if you're not gonna, if you're gonna not put it internally and you're gonna add on to the building for an elevator shaft, you have to come back to the board.
There we are. All right, if there are no other comments, make a motion. Is it procedurally, why is it decided to close the hearing, Mark?
You could, but you wouldn't be able to take any additional public comment on if you wanna see one more version of this approval with the revisions.
Are we talking about an approval at another meeting?
If, if you chose to do that, or you can vote it as amended tonight.
I think we really should, especially since the set of plans we went to go sign last time actually included a waiver that we had not allowed. So I would like to see a, a clean draft.
I would agree with that. I mean, there's quite a few changes that we're making here.
Yeah, and I don't think we got plans until Wednesday, so that wasn't by the cutoff either, the revised plans.
Mr. Chairman, I think we presented all the information.
Yeah, we're not looking for more information at this point. We're really just looking for us to all physically see the changes we've agreed upon tonight in print so that we can sign that copy, just because we've had, as Michelle referenced, plans come in where you've denied a waiver and it was still on there as a waiver. And so we have to cross out things and initial them, and we just don't wanna get into that on this decision.
So let me, let me ask the question that, in, in two weeks, is it the board's intent to, to sign a final draft decision? Or whatever the next meeting is, I, I'm not sure.
Yep, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this hearing for one more meeting until October twelfth at seven PM in order to review the final site plan approval document in which we will hope to sign that based on tonight's discussion of our conditions and amendments to the document.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will see you with this continued in two weeks to close this out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is review and possible vote to approve corrective amendment to the certificate of approval for Golfer's Way. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but this was a date change. There was an error between June twenty-seven and June seven, or something like that?
Yeah, June twenty-seventh replaced June seven. Yeah, it, there was the final plan wasn't referenced, it was the plan before. So when he's recording the plan, it has to that you've signed, that you've approved, that certificate has to reference that plan and not the one that was revised before. So this just.
And that's what it's doing. It's just correcting some dates.
So there's absolutely, you know, no doubt which plan that you've approved.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns about this?
No. Straightforward.
Nora, you good?
I'm good.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this corrective measure and I, the chairman, will sign this to refile this at the town clerk's office?
Second.
No, doesn't it need to just be signed and attached with the other one?
So.
I second it.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Kathy, don't let me leave without signing that original. Uh, next item on the agenda, planning board goals, which Nora originally said continue it, but then you said you wanted to touch on it.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to continue it. I didn't bring a couple things that I've done, so I am gonna ask you to continue it.
Next meeting, Kathy?
Sorry about that, Kathy.
Uh, you got some stuff in here about chapter land, ma, maps? Michelle, would you like to talk to that?
So, there was an up, there was another. Was this still the same list that I had submitted?
Are you talking about the sixty-one A list?
Yeah, because I thought that Mark said he was gonna try to get an updated list from the assessors.
I talked to Norm and it'll take a couple days. They have to request it from the vision company. But I can, if you would like to get an updated list.
Yes, I will motion to
Okay.
have the town planner get an updated list of the current chapter properties.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Could I just ask, what's our end game with the discussion on?
Maps?
We're just looking to update the maps that show the, the land that's in chapter?
So, like I said, I would like to find out if we can get it on the GIS as an overlay.
Oh, okay.
Because, you know, the, the assessors deal with the GIS maps.
I think it's for a ten mark, just so people could look and see that.
Mm-hmm. I think it would be helpful, helpful for everyone because especially when I came on this board, there was a property that was chapter land, Barbara knew, and I was like, "How did you know?" And she just happened to know because she knew how to find that out, but.
I imagine that's something maybe we'll have to work with syrup head to get that done, Mark, or is that?
Uh, no, this would probably be done through the GIS company that we use. We have had some discussions on trying to enhance what we currently have because it's, it's, it's good as far as researching property and ownership and what's assessed at, but some of the other layers, like utility layers, catch basins, fire hydrants, the fire chief wanted. Those layers don't exist, so we have.
Is that fee-based?
What?
Is that fee-based?
I'm not sure what, what the town's contract is.
Around those that you can go in and pull sixty-one.
Nora, I believe they are. I think we pay for certain ones, but.
I'd be interested in what that fee is.
Right, exactly, to expand it and see.
But I can certainly bring that up and try and see where, what's.
Probably not a bad thing for the town.
No, no, the, the only, the only thing about creating a layer like that as opposed to, like, where the fire hydrants are. Once they're placed, or drainage, yeah, drainage basins and.
This is a living, breathing map that things get pulled out, put in.
Exactly. Every year, it can, certain parcels can change, and so.
Right, but I mean, those assessors' maps are updated. So I would think when that happens, it could, it, it should happen.
Yeah, I mean, there, there could be, could be a process and a procedure for, for kind of following up at a certain time. So I'll find out about that as well.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Michelle, you had sent some stuff about a zoning change process.
Yeah, so I started looking at other towns, see what they have as far as zoning change process. This kind of originated months ago from a discussion I had with a select board member and, and she, you know, she said it, you know, it might be good to have a process and, and for myself, I think it would be great to actually have this come before the select board, before the planning board. As soon as a developer is looking to make a zoning change, rather than it be like an offline conversation, something like that. I think it would be great to have an, an outlined process. So my thought was to, if this board agrees, that's something we wanna move forward with. I would like to see it circulated to, you know, zoning enforcement officer, the select board, whoever else, you know, town clerk. Because I think it would be helpful to have a process laid out so if anybody is looking, I know, I know if you go to town clerk's page, you can find, you know, information about a resident petition, but there are other means of getting zoning change accomplished or, or begun, and, and I think it would be good to have a process that's, you know.
Was it, was the end game of this to have, like, the process and application on the town website?
Exactly, like an application. That's what this is, that I found from another town that I copied.
Sounds like we should probably have a conversation with the select board, just to make sure that they're interested in doing that.
Right.
I know you said you referenced one member, but there are three, it seemed to be five. So we probably should talk to them.
Right, because the, the process does go through the select board's office. The actual petitions do get submitted to the select board and they're the ones who forward it to the planning board for the public hearing. Petitions can be obviously submitted by the planning board, zoning board, selectmen themselves, as well as citizens' petitions. So, but since it goes through the select board, I think, you know, meeting with the board and seeing what their thoughts on, are, whether they want to work on something like what you've submitted, although there are mistakes in what's been submitted, but.
Yeah, like I said, I copied it from, one of them came from a city and one of them came from a town.
But for, for discussion purposes, I mean, one, one is an FAQ, kind of outlining stuff, you know, the process, which could be better, but, and then the application could be expanded because it's very focused on just zoning changes for property. But, you know, it, again, that would be if the selectmen choose to either ask the planning board or some other, or they task it themselves, you know.
Right, so I don't know if I need to make a motion. Should, should I, um, do you wanna reach out to the select board and have a joint meeting or?
Why don't you generate an email with me and you and Brian?
Okay.
And.
And I'd like to be on it too.
Sure.
Then, you know, if we could include the, maybe the drafts that Michelle has included and just start a conversation about that, to see if they're interested.
The drafts and maybe the links as well to the towns that I sent, cuz that shows where it came from, that I'm not just coming up with it out of the blue.
What towns?
Um, it was in the email.
Oh, I didn't, oh, Kath, Kathy got it.
Oh, yeah. So.
Okay, I, I, we can get it.
Okay, so we'll, Kathy, if you wouldn't mind, put those last two items on future agenda?
Yep.
Thank you. And we'll follow up with that and see what happens with interest from the select board, hopefully. Uh, we gotta approve a set of minutes, August seventeenth, which I believe was the remote meeting we had. Did everybody have a chance to review those? Have you got a chance to look at them?
I don't remember. I did.
You called in on that one, didn't you?
I did, yeah. Oh, yeah, okay, I did reviews. I think I didn't have an issue with them.
I don't, I didn't see any issues with them. I would move that we approved the minutes of Thursday, August seventeenth.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes for August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three are approved. Uh, any correspondence, Mark?
Um, no, it was only a few little items. I don't believe they were of consequence.
Just for the record, our next meeting, October twelfth, twenty twenty-three, here at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room.
Actually, there was one, it's not really near, but we're technically in about a terranum, so they have a seven-building, two-hundred-and-forty-unit, forty-B.
That's right on Forty-four, right?
No, this is kind of further in.
It is the one that come, it's, it's the one that goes from Church Street, but there is a
Right, right.
A way over to Forty-four.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but this is Two-Fifty-One Broadway.
Oh.
So it's further, I don't know, Rainham and all.
Broadway? That's One-Thirty-eight.
Yeah, that's on the other side of town.
No? Yeah, yeah, One-Thirty-eight.
Over by the other Walmart.
The milk bottle, yeah. What?
Okay.
Here's another one, huh? Where are they gonna put them in those? They're gonna need their own school.
They are.
That's all.
That's all? That said, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting carries, uh, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.